So we can go ahead and begin the um Borough um regular meeting. For February sixteen, two thousand twenty-three. Um we'll start with Paul DeWort.
President Ferguson.
Here.
Vice President Gerard.
Here.
Councilmember Fagan.
Here.
Councilmember Presser.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Mayor Gerard.
Here.
Borough manager Snyder.
Here.
Borough solicitor Harper.
Here.
Alright, can we stand with your allegations? My allegations to the right. Councilman Stevens, can you do your indication?
Almighty and merciful God, we thank you for your many blessings on us and our community. We thank you for this opportunity to serve our community and we ask that you would guide us as we work on this. Yes, like the G C.
Alright, getting to our agenda items. We'll start with item number one, approval of the meeting agenda. I get a motion to approve the agenda for this regular meeting, February sixteen, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second.
I got a motion from Councilmember Presser, a second from Councilman Gerard. Any questions, changes, or amendments? Alright, all in favor? Item number two, approval of the meeting minutes. May I motion to approve the minutes for the January fourth, twenty twenty-three workshop meeting and the January eighteenth regular meeting? I got a motion from Councilmember Presser, a second from Councilman Stevens. Any changes, amendments, or additions or corrections to that? Those being minutes. If there are none, all in favor?
Fine, I propose.
You're enough. Alright, we'll go to item three, public inputs. Um if you have anyone in the public who would like to make a statement or ask questions, please rise, state your name and address, address council. And yes, please approach podium. Initial microphone is on.
Yes, the Robert L. Boyer Chamber, neighborhood drive, four six two. Uh and I have a little concern on the the man that put that uh so-called one-story house, rancher. And it's a rancher with a second story. And now that number matter.
Uh did you notice the property addresses?
The chief, he was one around the neighborhood bragging about the ranch.
Uh it's three seventy-one, uh Edgewood Drive.
That's the new property that's being sold off the street in the back area.
Yep. By Mr. Rita.
Okay. Um so, correct me if I'm wrong, it sounds like you're questioning whether he's gotten the proper permits to work for the house? That will spec out for the property?
Well, I understand at the beginning, there's a question. And they got, they got swatched away to move what he wants to put in.
Well, he would have had to go through uh the zoning and everything else to 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 build a house, so I'm assuming he's going to find something else.
Right, we we've had some code issues with regards to cleaning streets and stuff like that, but the zoning issue has been resolved and he's that he's got the permits for what he's building in.
Okay.
You know, my question was how that come about?
Uh you make an application, that particular one, I think had a zoning here, I don't remember off the top of my head. Did not?
Did not because um it was rather was on Edgewood, not commens, Mr. Clement was representing and there was an email back.
That's right, okay. It it was, he he took an existing house down and put another house in its place. He did get the address changed. That lot apparently could have had an address on Ed- Edgewood, Edmont, or Ental Medson, and he went with your street, instead. Um he also needed any reason for his driveway. And that was worked out. I mean, this literally took more than a year. And then he applied for the building permit and he got. Then we had some complaints from some of your neighbors um. And there were recent complaints regarding dirt on the street and not enough um soil erosion control, you know, to keep the dirt from running into waterways. And uh the engineer was out there, the zoning officer was out there. And uh they stopped the work for a day and a half, cleaned it all up, and then they allowed him to proceed.
Okay, why can't he made put a washing station up there in that his property, wash it, cut it off?
That's a good idea, and there was something worked out, the town, the borough engineer, Chad was out there. And they did work something out to have a uh some kind of a washing station. I don't know if it's on a truck or not, but they did actually, you know, require him to keep the place clean and to clean up the mud that was in the street.
Okay, well then, I never seen it happen because I bought my own pasture.
You didn't notice them cleaning up? Okay, let me look at the dates. When was it?
They cleaned up the street, I see.
Right.
But that was only this past issue. The other times the trucks were coming out and they were putting mud all over the street.
Right. Right, and somebody reported it. The zoning officer, code officer went out and looked and saw it and then issued an appropriate stop work order. He needed help from the our our borough engineer who has more experience with that, but yes, they're they're working it.
So I guess the question is, is is since the date that that went in place, have we seen the same, have we seen the issue taken care of? So we can figure out what the date was and then we can note and ask the question, have we seen dirt in a row since then?
This week it was cleaned up and we, Jamie and I got an email from Chad, our engineer, saying he'd been out there, sent somebody out there and forget. But it was cleaned up. It was okay. They could start work again. He had a stop work order for a couple days. And but they said it was cleaned up. Now, it could happen again. And in which case, um the gentleman should call the borough code officer and tell him it's happening again.
We're talking about actually dirt in the street, not the red.
Correct. We're talking about um the trucks leaving, the the construction, he's building the house, the trucking trucks leaving the site and not having their waters, their tires cleaned off before they leave the site. So Chad had advised him to get some kind of a way to clean them on site.
Okay.
It's a rock construction entrance, which is what we uh required Mr. Rita to put up. Mr. Rita did put it up. Uh Chad Amber went out and inspected it, said it was satisfactory, and then Mr. Rita was left to proceed with his work. And that took place at the beginning of this week. Uh last week was when the email came in on Friday about the dirt all over the road and it needs to be cleaned up and that stop work order was put in. And myself, the solicitor, and the engineer were all on, and they could always put on the screen. They were paying attention to try to make sure he's doing.
And the second thing is, when uh whatever house that it was came in to dig around the holes that uh in the kind of block. They didn't dug out around the hole so they can drill a hole and see if they tell it will fall to okay. But when you walk down there in the dark, you're tripping over big rocks and dirt that they left on the side.
Yeah, that was a a subcontractor through Verizon. So Verizon had, and I believe it's like, they're being started with an I, I don't want to say I'm supposed to, but something close to that. Tracked it in the borough and the township, and if you saw their white trucks, they were going around um digging around all the Verizon poles and testing them. Or they go screwdriver grill or a
Drill hole.
Yeah, or drill holes and test all the poles. So that was not at Philboro, that was Verizon, and that was a Verizon contractor.
And that just wasn't in this area, but it's all over?
Yes.
No, it wasn't Mr. Rita.
No, it was not. It was Verizon, and no Verizon.
I I should tell them to a couple of them, uh look, I give you so electric, you find boys around there fishing stuff. Where I think electricity in the south part has South Place and Reddy. And one other house. And you know, you're going to call Verizon, you got that, you can hire them. Why do I have to call Verizon?
Uh they uh the borough didn't hire them. Verizon hires them, okay?
Well, it still don't matter. I didn't hire them, so why should I have to call?
Well, if your neighbor did something to your property.
It wasn't the neighbor, there's people who were digging around the pole.
Right. Right.
It was Verizon.
It was Verizon. It's not the borough, it's not your neighbor, it's Verizon.
Right. So I should say, I I don't have to call Verizon and say, hey, what are you doing? Is it my apartment? Is it my job to do that?
Do you think it's the borough's job?
I didn't hire them.
The borough didn't hire them either.
Okay.
I, well, I think the point is, correct me if I'm wrong, so i- if the borough had responsibility for digging the holes, you would obviously reach out to the borough and say, hey, what are you doing? You've impacted my property. Uh to Kate's point too, if your neighbor had done something, you would have to talk to your neighbor. In this instance, Verizon contracted these people to do this. And so therefore, you know, you would have to reach out to them to get restitution or to get uh whatever was done fixed. Because Verizon's the one that was responsible for it. So so the borough wasn't responsible, we didn't contract anyone to do that. So technically, we don't have standing to to call Verizon and say, hey, you need to go fix such and such property because it's not our problem, right?
We're giving you phone numbers, oh.
Okay, okay, can we find a number to give?
Sure, um normally when we uh call Verizon, it's just the one eight hundred Verizon number and I'll ask for like technical service. That's what we do when we have like uh cable issues. Um I certainly can check um if there's a better contact for that. Maybe they posted something on their website that they were going to be in the area doing work.
Well, I think that's the last time we just talked with that eight hundred number and, you know, more to figure out there where, you know, again, I don't think we would know where to go easily. Okay.
And then the other thing was the visitor or going inspector is supposed to like check and see what he's doing on that house?
Yes, and that's the code officer I was referring to earlier. He's been coming by and checking on the house. But to be fair, um it's not the only property in the borough. So if you see something that needs to be checked, well, no.
No, my question is, is that who it is? I see the car come up there. I never seen him get out and go in and check it.
We have a code officer who handles both building and um if he's looking for a zoning issue, he does have to get out of the car usually, sometimes. If it's a code issue, then he has to go in. But, you know, he's not going to be twenty-four seven on any project.
No, my question is, I see him come up the street. He'll slow down. He never even, he tends to going in there. He slows down and just goes.
Well, I I think, and I think what Kate's saying too is that, you know, we haven't gotten any reports from the 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 zoning officer to say there's any violations or anything going on. If you see something that that is a violation, let us know and we'll follow up with that person. But right now, as far as we know, that that person is doing what they're responsible for, what they're contracted to do, and they haven't told us of any violations of the code.
Other than the ones we
Other than the ones we've already pointed out.
No, just so you know, before he gets what's called a certificate of occupancy, the code officer will go through the house to make sure he did it right.
You let me know when it is, I'll watch. Because if he's not even going in on the property to see if it's being done there, how's he going to send anything to you people that, oh?
He doesn't get his certificate of occupancy until the place is inspected.
I know.
And he's not going to ask for that until he's done. And when he thinks he's done, he's going to ask for a certificate of occupancy, then the code officer goes out, looks around, make sure everything's right.
Well, and I think there may be, you may have a little misunderstanding. The code officer isn't going to go out every day and monitor what they're doing.
I'm not wrong with that.
Okay.
Sorry about the times I change the part of the box.
Right. Well, but again, you know, there's a process, and again, I'll I'll admit, I don't know the exact process. But there's certain things that they're watching for overall that that he can see from outside the property. But to Kate's point, when the before the certificate of occupancy is given, there's certain things he will go into the property, into the house, make sure those are done correctly. Right? And so that's, you know, definitely a point when he'll go in. But the code officer knows when he needs to go in and what stage of construction, you know. Um and so as far as I said, nothing's been indicated that he's violating or not following normal practice. So again, if you see something other than, you know, you don't see him going on the property, but if you say, oh, that would be a violation, you know, that lets us know.
He's got a big camera up there, but today, I'm part of the neighborhood watch. I went all the way down, come in, turn around and come back. Cause I came back, I'm going first, slow looking around. People are trying to swing the town because he's sitting on on anything that they outside the truck. He goes, what's the matter with you? What are you looking for? Excuse me? What are you looking for? You looking for trouble? I said, no. I said, but well, are are they having my trouble? Yes, could you lie here? Which he did. Yeah, end of my sheet. Thank you.
Uh which is that what I said to the solicitor uh on the side was that um I am aware that Bob, the code officer, does go out and do inspections. Because uh it depends on the phase that the property is being built in. So he did go out to the property, do footer inspections. I'm not a hundred percent up on all the codes. Um but I do know that he talks about having to go to the properties for a roughing, for plumbing and electrical and those things. So I do know that those are to be scheduled and he does have them scheduled. So he will be out to the property and going physically to the property for them. It just depends where in the phase of the construction is the house right now. And it might not be in the phase where he needs to be there every day to inspect, but I
Or to be in the building.
Correct, yes. But he, I do know those are scheduled and he did physically go and do footer inspections and framing and those things.
I I think it's a good idea to have a code officer take a drive around the borough. There are other things that he might see, so I don't think it's a problem that he's driving around. I think that's good.
Right. Anything else, council? Anything else for public?
No.
Alright. If not, we'll go to item four, announcements.
Uh next council meetings, March first workshop and March fifteenth regular meeting at seven P M here in council chambers. Planning commissioner is scheduled to meet on Monday, February seventh at seven P M here in council chambers. Hurrock is scheduled to meet February twenty-second uh at eight A M here in council chambers, though I think that that might be canceled. Is that correct?
Yeah, to the point you don't have a role to stop.
Okay, okay. So I believe that 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 meeting will be canceled. Um Hatfield Museum Historical Society is scheduled to meet Tuesday, March twenty-eighth at seven P M at the Hatfield Bonsier Fire Company. At your places this evening was an Earth Day Community Cleanup Fire. That is April fifteenth from nine A M to twelve P M. It's a um borough-wide community cleanup at Centennial Park, Edgewood Park, Electric Plant Park, Heritage Park, Liberty Bell Trail from East Lincoln Avenue to West Vine. We'll post the flyer on the website um and we hope for volunteers to come out. And finally, I wanted to say that we're trying to work on an M S four training for staff. I don't have the deep uh nail down yet. It could possibly be March first, second, or eighth. But the borough office would have to be closed uh from twelve to one thirty. We have to have this training done prior to March fifteenth for M S for M S four permit. So I'm just working with the engineer now when they can come in on our schedule and do a small training for uh M S four for our permit. So those are the three dates we're looking at, and when we know those dates, we will post them on social media to let everybody know that the office is closed.
Are any of those days on Wednesday that we have extended hours on Wednesday?
Yeah, I'm really hoping March first will work because it's extended hours on a Wednesday, so if we're closed for an hour in the middle of the day, it's okay because we're open later. Uh so I picked March first, but I also gave them two other options in case the Wednesday doesn't work.
Okay. And then for the cleanup, uh Centennial Park is where it started, and I heard it was starting in all the parks. Do you mind if I call that word?
Well, uh I would like to see maybe a staggered thing because we would have to put somebody at each park to give the gloves out and, you know, just direct them in the bags. So I would like to see maybe, you know, starting off the uh Cent- what do you call it, Heritage Park. That could be done in a half an hour, forty-five minutes. But the other parts, especially Centennial, Edgewood also.
You want to put like tigers and
I I mean, or at least we could just maybe at each park, we can leave somebody, leave the gloves and bags and just direct them. So um I don't know that we finalized things yet, but um we need all parts, so this is part. It's just, are we going to stagger it? Say, well, are people going to go here and then go there and then go, are they going to want to be? I'm thinking each part, we have somebody from the borough to dive people, and then this way it can all be done at the same time. And then just go around and pick it back.
Yeah, I think on the back of the flyer was um her idea that bag and glove pickup will take like place at the borough office. And the Xs represent where you are to leave the bags when you're done and that they will be picked up by eleven forty-five. And I think her idea was, and it it, this isn't set, what we, the mayor had said, was kind of like, you can come pick up and go wherever you would like to go on your own and do the cleanup that you like on your own, leave the bags, and we'll pick it up on uh by eleven forty-five. Kind of, I don't want to say more of a free-for-all bad cha- bad language, but kind of more they can come and go on their own. But I think it can be whatever you guys would like to see it, and if you would like to see designated times at specific part, absolutely, we'll make that. I think she just was kind of, I know that the township just put their Earth Day stuff out, and I know that we talked to Councilmember Fagan about putting a flyer together and out sooner rather than later. So I think she just wanted to see something to try to make sure we have enough volunteers.
Right. I also wanted uh to see about the possibility of having these um put plastic in plastic and then post them at the different parks. So if somebody's there walking their dog, they can say, oh, we're having a cleanup. And then that might get the the order in, the people that actually use the parks, so.
You know, laminate them and do you want to um her to get something together and send it off to uh Hurrock and with more of a time is or will that be good to send it or do you want to come talk to her or whatever?
I I think I'll come and talk to her.
Okay, yeah, just to see. Yeah, sure.
So the flyer hasn't been posted yet, I understand.
It it has not been posted. She just wanted everybody to see tonight kind of what she was thinking and if that's what it was. And that um if you guys are okay with it, we certainly will post it, but we can make some changes just for the announcements. It's going to be April fifteen, ninth to twelfth, and we'll put the details up when we when we iron those out.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Any other question? Alright, if we're done with announcements, we'll go to item five, the twenty twenty-one audit presentation. Chris Hurd, the floor George, my friend.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Um thanks, Chris. I'm a part of mainly with the independent auditors for your uh twenty twenty-one audit. I'm happy to be here tonight to uh present the results. Uh I did have a five or six page summary that I'm going to go over. Hopefully we'll have that. Um just kind of dive into that um.
He has it on the jump drive. Would you like it on screen?
Yeah, I'll just put it on the screen. Yeah, we all, I have copies, so everyone is, it's copy.
Yeah, I thought they were safe to jump drive. It'd be easier to go over the phrase on the screen.
Yeah, okay. That's it. Okay, so just dive right in with the uh summary file and results of the audit. Uh the auditors report, this is our opinion on the final financial statement. It's an unmodified opinion, it's also an opinion, you can see best opinion you have, which you want to have on your financials. Uh what that essentially means is that in our opinion, same screen any journal statement. They comply with all GAAP, which generally sets the capital principles, all the GAAP, the governmental accountants and corporate announcements. And there's no scale of limitations. We come in with a very long list of documents that we want to see from from uh compliance, everything from bank statements and recs to uh every employees W two we look at to uh uh individual inputs. We get everything that we need for the audit. No instances, no instances of non-compliance were noted during the audit. Uh we did have a few findings during the audit. Um and and what the findings are, they were also issued in a separate letter. They should have part of the audit documents. Um and what these are is anytime I'm doing an audit and I I I note things that uh could be done better. Um or if we have uh significant number of journal entries, we'll issue findings for that. So we did have about forty journal entries, adjustments to books of entry in the audit. Uh which for me is a really key indicator that there's things that could be um phenomenal trouble. So the main four items we have here, um cash investment oversight, noted activity for several cash investment accounts without recorded in general ledger or reconciling in the year. So during our process, we did note that there was a couple of new accounts during the year, um capital projects uh in ARPA, and while those were positive, bank account, bank statements were maintaining, those cash accounts were on books. And then there was also some other investment cash account where um actually the year had been reported from January to December. That was one issue that we noted. Uh finding number two, year-end accrual entries. So every year, uh at the end of the year, you should have a ledger, receivable entries. Uh several of the balances, when we came in and looked at twelve thirty-one, twenty-one balances, they were the same as twelve thirty-one. So we did have to make entries to revert prior year pools and report current unit pools uh for tax receivables, um A R, some electric sewer receivables, payable accruals, uh sewer payable, mainly the fourth quarter treatment charge there. So there's all adjustments that we made over uh during the audit. Finding number three for account classifications. Um we know during the audit, the there are accounts of then revenues and expenses not closing fund balance. One person to do part of the audit with the fund balance. Fund balances on the balance sheets, the difference between assets and liabilities. The only thing that should have stacked fund balance at all is every year when you close your books, you know, closing book, there you put the revenues, expenses. They close that fund balance account and then, you know, you start with new zero revenues and tests way the next year. So the first thing we usually do is we look at, you know, what's the fund balance uh in twelve thirty-one, twenty books, there's a three to the end of twelve thirty-one, twenty, and it didn't. Uh some of that might be due to some prior journal entries, the book, thirty like twenty that we had made. But there was also some revenue and expense accounts in your general ledger that weren't zeroing out. So instead of going to fund balance, they, the revenues, revenue and expenses should roll into twenty twenty-one. So we had to correct that as well. But number four, interfund balances, um you know, you have several funds here. Uh fund A owes fund B money. We should have a payable on fund A and a a due from on fund B, and they should be the same dollar amount. Um so another one of the things we rolled, I wanted to go through, reconciled, interfund due to be fronts and their uh reconciled transfer ends and transfer adds. And those initially did not reconcile. Part of that should be because of uh, you know, finding number one, where there's cash accounts that weren't on books. Um that capital project on that hadn't been on the books. Some of those moved funds were transferred out of there on the bank account. So you're going to have one side of the activity and the other side of the activity. Um and like I said, we had similar similar findings um to those four things uh the last couple of years that I've been doing your audit. Uh I did have ones where you can do recognition. Uh this is something that doesn't rise to the level of, you know, this is something that could materially increase the financial payments. But it is significant enough that I wanted to put in the letter. We had a few accounts, accounts where if if I hadn't made an adjustment to your end, you would have had negative cash in the funds. And the reason for that is uh because you guys just hold cash here for some of your activity. So you have one statement with, let's say, two million dollars. Okay? A million is in fund A, a million is in fund B, or a million is in fund A, five hundred, B, five hundred and sixty. There's only one cash. So what happens is if you add that cash account, just sort of having the general fund. If for fund C, which has five hundred thousand dollar paper balance, share this account, all of a sudden they have six hundred thousand dollars spent. It comes out of that main cash account. What ends up happening is you have negative a hundred thousand dollars cash in there. You still have a positive bank balance. But one individual fund can go negative. It's not the first time I've seen that happen with full cash. Uh it's one of the reasons I'm not a fan of of a full cash accounts at all. Um it is something that you're going to need to watch for to make sure that, you know, if we're charging excess to a fund, that there's adequate. That there's adequate cash balance there now. Otherwise, what should be happening is goes into due to the. And that's ultimately my idea to make sure that we didn't have any cash accounts that had negative cash. Um standard is negative cash really means this one. So those would just move from cash and. Any questions on any of those before I move on? So on the next page, I always like to disclose some of the estimates from the financial statement. Uh capital assets depreciation and cumulative depreciation. Your governmental activities and just really everything other than the electric and sewer. Oh, cost of assets right now is about thirteen point six million. Cumulative appreciation on that's up one million. So you're about thirty percent through all of your assets, which is really, that's a, that's a little less. So um a lot of life left in the assets. The business type activities, which is your electric sewer, about eight million dollars plus, uh four point four million appreciation. So you're about fifty-two percent of the way through your your uh ledger, considering again, pretty typical. Maybe a little on the low side for proprietary utility type fund. Um one good number, the net pension liability. Um so this is the asset sitting in trust compared to what you're actually redefining as your liability at the end of year twenty-one. It um is an asset, so as of twelve thirty-one twenty-one, your pension plan is um. Technically overfunded. You have a little extra cash and then more more investment value than liability. So. That's a good thing to see that happening going down by about one hundred, two hundred thousand dollars for last uh period for years. So finally. Game asset. Hopefully you guys will try to re-prepare and staff lower end of payments uh on board soon. Getting into some of the numbers for the year. Uh so a couple graphs here, just looking at the first year, this is your governmental funds, this is your general fund, capital projects. Uh total governmental fund revenues for twenty-one, about one point two million dollars. Uh paid about one point one million there before, so up about a hundred thousand dollars. Most of that is in your tax revenue column, about seven hundred ninety thousand last year, is up about eighty thousand dollars this year. Uh real estate taxes were up about thirty thousand, uh and your transfer taxes were a double. They went from thirty to ninety-sixteen million. So. That's all that allowed basically taxes. Had a really good year in the last year. Uh your intergovernmental revenues were down a little bit, hundred forty-seven thousand dollars, down to one hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars. Um a lot of little increases. My biggest thing was in twenty twenty, you guys got a recite about ten thousand dollars. Those things are hit and miss. Sometimes you get two in one year, one in one year. You did not get that in twenty twenty-one. Um I would expect that from that in twenty-two, that's the reason for that drop. And then your licenses and permits, which is like the building permits, people franchise fees, pretty flat, about nine thousand top. On the expense side, um pretty big increase in governmental expenses, three point uh shy, three point seven million this year. First two point four the year before. Public safety, um so just shy of a million dollars last year, about a million fifty for twenty twenty-one. Big change here came into Hatfield uh PB, we're up fifty-five thousand dollars year on year. So that's most that increase. General government, uh five hundred thirty-seven thousand, up to six hundred twenty-one. I didn't see any one particular thing there. It seemed to be mostly your usual benefits, salary type increases, higher health insurance. Uh higher salaries, all that, that that kind of thing. Then the capital outlays, um obviously that's a big increase here from year to year. Three hundred thousand uh in twenty twenty, up to about one point two million in twenty twenty-one. Big thing there, about a million dollars in average improvement expenses. Then over with proprietary funds, um revenues really flat year on year. Electric, three point seven million twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Sewer, uh you know, six hundred sixty versus hundred eighty thousand. So electric sewer revenues very flat year on year. On the expense side. Um. Electric went from two point four to two point seven million dollars. Um lectures and purchase effect was a lot of one hundred thousand dollars. And there's some emergency repairs for about a hundred thousand, I think, twenty twenty-one, that really made up that increase. Sewer down, um down shy of three hundred thousand. Nine hundred forty-three thousand last year, down to six fifty-three for twenty twenty-one. Uh big thing was it was sewer interceptor expenses in twenty twenty, about two hundred thousand. And then your wastewater treatment was uh extended down about eight thousand. So that actually. And then you do transfer out um fair amount of money to your five very points, it goes over to your governmental funds, pretty flat year on year. High nine hundred million for that. Next page, um. This top graph is probably the most important graph of everything. This is fund balance. I mentioned earlier, that's the difference between your assets and liability. So. Put your assets, hit off all your debts, it's what you have left over. Um I guess I started cobbling my way down sewer, um really, really flat, three point six million dollars, came up a little bit, three point seven million dollars. Um at the end of twenty-one. The blue line is. More concerned, slower not concerned, and that's your general fund. Um was one point six million dollars two years ago, came down to one point three million last year, down to one point one million this year. The reason I'm a little bit concerned, I mean no concerns, right, where I don't like seeing that trending downward. Three years in a row, um I usually like to see general fund stabilize, or at least kind of go up and down a little bit. The one reason I wouldn't be concerned is still about one point one million dollars at the end of twenty twenty-one. One of the things I always use compared to your annual expenses, general, so. You have roughly fifty percent of annual expenses, about, these are really good done. Even though that's trending downward, I still think you have a good fund balance. The gray line, that's your elector. Um again, relatively flat, um five hundred thousand two years ago. Came up to six hundred eighteen last year, dropped fifteen thousand, thirteen thousand, five digits. So again, pretty flat line. And then orange line at the bottom, this is your other governmental fund, mostly your capital reserve, capital project type funds. Three hundred sixteen thousand two years ago, came up with three hundred forty-four last year, and then that went up to one point one million this year. Uh the reason for that is you guys have got two million dollars spawned on it in twenty twenty-one. So that new money that came in sitting in capital projects, that was out of the already settled. So that's the one line that you pick with the books, you go up and down. Borrow money, spend on the. Right below that, this is your outstanding debt, four point four million dollars in twenty twenty, it's up to six million dollars this year again. The recent increase is that two million dollars new money and then you paid about three hundred thousand. And then last page is something I like to put in for all my boards. Uh this is just kind of some of the stuff we do in the background, just to explain our process a little bit. Uh on the balance sheet, we will confirm a lot of your cash and investments. Uh we'll do a lot of testing on receivables, we confirm debt, uh we'll do subsequent disbursement and testing for payable. Make sure that things you paid in January, February, March, twenty-two, that shouldn't go back if someone were. So we do a really thorough job on the balance sheet. We confirm a lot of your revenues to do that, and what we're left with is. Hundreds, thousands of expense transactions. Okay, how are we gonna audit that? We do a lot of data extraction analysis uh at our firm. So one of the things I do is I get from your business office, the general ledger detail, that's every individual transaction of the borough for the. And we do a variety of things to analyze that data to come up with how we test it. One of the things we do is that graphic top is called vendor's ball table, vendor's ball, the math map ball, um good lights of. Everything from menu prices to major league baseball batting averages. Instead of any large randomly occurring population numbers, the first digit will be one about thirty percent of time. Two, about twenty-two percent of the time, and it just drops off from there. So that's your actual data for twenty twenty-one to put into the table. And as you can see, most of your transactions are one, that dropped down to two and three. And that one is whether it's one dollar change in teens, the one hundreds, one thousands, whatever it would be. That's one thing we do, we do one digit. I've never seen a mixture of one digit, we do it two digits, you know, the first is one, one, two, all the way to nine, nine. We do tend to get some things that fly in there. Uh we did with you guys. So we we then look at the underlying data to see why is it unusual about exactly, start with. Three, two, or six, four, whatever it would be, for you guys to call the current paper. I guess, which is typically what I see in municipalities. Um it's capable to be very tight before every two weeks. Some other things we do down there at the bottom, um we do pivot table analysis, we lay out your data by month, uh every individual account will look at. All right, what's the expenses in January, February, all the way through December, look pretty unusual, increases, decreases in activity and impacts there. Cause we've been doing a lot for a few years. We can also compare it with June twenty-one, like compare to June twenty-two, June twenty. And we'll do that as well. Predictive analytics.
So what does, when you look at that, what is it, what are you trying to check when you do that analysis?
We're looking for any unusual abuses of financial. Process. One thing to look for would be if you internally have a. You know, an approval cutoff on POs, let's say, and if it's over five hundred dollars, we need to have, you know, additional approvals. So we'll go through, do a whole lot of things, start with forty-nine, that would be an area of concern. Same thing with ninety-nine. Or do you have someone who, you know, that is running, you know. Running fraudulent activity through the system and keeping the entity ready uh creatures of habit. So if they see, oh, I got something through for, you know, fifty dollars and change, then maybe they just keep doing it. So we're looking for unusual activity, regardless of where it's coming from, someone who's since were fraud or. Certain mention of of controls, that's that kind of. Um so other things, predictive analytics, uh I'll take before I even start, um I think I already have it set up. Twenty twenty-two, before I even start twenty twenty-one, I look at eighteen nineteen twenty-one. Literally your expense accounts come up trends, trying to anticipate where this twenty-two gonna look like, I don't care what my my. Expectations, what actually happened, and if the expense comes out higher or lower than I thought, again, that's all we're gonna pass. Like I I think I mentioned earlier, we're looking at any clues of two compared to last year, look for any unusual variations from year to year. Uh we look at journal entries, um we'll look at the vendors. Um we'll do look at payments as well, uh just make sure that, you know, invoice didn't get paid twice. We find that more often, we need to think where. We find that in audit, all of a sudden, you know, we go to a vendor, vendor usually won't tell you to pay the flex. They'll tell you if you didn't pay at all. If you pay twice, like I've had several instances where, you know, we come out of the audit and you wanna base the page for itself with a fifty, a hundred thousand dollar refund. Uh vendor, so. The 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 point of all that is we're not coming in with expenses and looking at the same accounts every year with vendors. It is a risk-based data-driven. So I always like to distract that, we're not doing, we're not doing this. Sure, God, you have to build on questions to drive.
So I I saw that you had some recommendations um for uh some of the things that we saw. Um some of the problems he described is basically is is how we do our accounting. Um is there any recommendations for that other than just change our accounting methodology? Um I, you know. Is there any way to to work around it, or is it something we just have to live with?
I don't think it's something that you wanna live. Um Jane and I had a conversation earlier this week, um you know, I love to see you guys do it. Uh the full cash, this this idea, uh because right now you have a series of electric, some fire money, it's all. It's all one bank scene, which is convenient when it comes to doing this part of it, because it's all coming out of one account. But it starts to get. Cloudy with what's going on, you know, you really gotta watch like the negative cash and make sure, okay, if I'm gonna charge to the capital project for the fire fund. Do I have funds there to do this? Um I I do have a few other clients that use full cash, I'm assuming that you already don't. Um but it's certainly not the first time I've seen Ronald's full cash in my career. Um it can be very hard to keep track of what's going on between the parts. If you wanna stay with full cash, uh one of the things that I I recommended to Jane was, well, maybe we need to have a a better. Sort of checks and balances on reconciling um the the banking, as I say, so I don't know if that's all you about the spreadsheets. Um one of the things I think could be done would be, uh you know, there's. Pretty good lead sheet I had, part of our own, uh every trial balance account. The bank account that's the foot that then booked, the book balance. I think it would be a good checking balance to um, you know, introduce Jane into that process where. On a monthly basis, um you know, maybe by the middle of, you know, she's the one that has, you know, her report. Out of the accounts of, here's what the balances are, all these different cash accounts. And then she also has the bank statement, right, so you age for each of the, where you can go through every uh account on trial balance. Even if it's an account that really, and you do have a few of these, even if it's counted, the only activity in the year is, you know, a dollar of interest. Still have that process, it's going through everything, have we booked that dollar of interest this month? Does what's on the book match what's on the saving card? So I think that would be um. A a good part of the process. Another thing that um I mentioned is it's Jane was maybe doing a monthly. Double check of the error points, making sure that it Monday, since there's fund B monies payable on this one, matching with the evil on the other. And again, I'm gonna buy her through a list, all the accounts, the trial balance, that you have to be tracked and checked. I think that would help. Will go a long way to starting to correct um some of these issues.
It sounds like it's a very manual process to do that. Is there software to help automate that, or is it's?
I don't know if if within your software, there'd be a way to to. Customize and print reports where, you know, you could, once I give you that list of of interfunds, you could have sort of a. A pre-made, preset up report and system that would just give you the balance for the accounts. And if you see it, there, the sum is zero, you know, okay, I'm good. I don't know if your software, some software is really customizable, or. Um you know, looking at the the bank statement, right, part of it, I mean, you're gonna have to look at savings, that's gonna be a little bit of a manual. Process. I think you guys do that part of it anyway, so. Um some of it can hopefully be just pushed out of your system, um some of it might be a little bit. Might be worth trying to resolve our company too, seeing, hey, can we customize your report that only, you know, we'll we'll. Give me the accounts that I I pre-selected.
First quick question to the agent, described as being a true or false, going to what? In your opinion, do you feel that they really impacted the authenticity of our.
That you mean that you you get sort of throughout the year, is that for sure? Um. Not knowing exactly what we was looking at uh or look like, I I mean, some degree would have to, those cash counts. But I don't know if all that you put your data coming out of the system. Or if there's something that's being done manually in an Excel spreadsheet, offices, the like. That ARPA and that capital projects, that cash accounts that I said will miss your system. Those might be included on an Excel spreadsheet that you're giving us through a credit report or something like that. So. Uh I'm not, I I can't say that with any certainty, um whether it were or could not, it's your own. I got nowhere else to be.
Well, the other question I have, uh Jamie and I have talked about this before, is, you know, how we uh raise revenues. To our electric sewer versus our taskbooks. Um he has some comments on that. Process. I know, I know we talked about it quite a bit and and there's, there's a way we like doing it. And my understanding is that uh there's, there's a way that that our accounts would refer us to it, so.
Yeah. There's a stuff called Blue Book, which is, you know, our our dictionary. Our dictionary rules, which I brought with all of the rules, I mean. What I think I would. Prefer to use, and I think because there's seven proprietary funds, your electric and sewer. I think generally. The philosophy behind having seven proprietary funds is. That the funds that are raised by your electric sewer fund are for electric and sewer purposes. And. Generally, the only funding that should really be pushed over to the general fund would be reimbursement for services. So, you know, if. I think a good example, if, if. Janie is the manager, her salary was entirely in the general fund. But then you look at it and say, well, really she spends half of her time over in electric sewer. Then I think it would be a, a rationale for transferring money from. Electric sewer over to the general, really wouldn't be a transfer, it'd be more of a payment for. Servicing coming from out of the general, not be more just an allocation. Yeah, it's a cost allocation, really, um. I'm not. It's not the first time I've seen Minnesota where the proprietary funds are. You know, the, the cash driver and there's money going over to the general fund. Uh, generally though, I think the goal would probably be more have everything aside. Money for the electric, same in the electric and store the electric purposes, same with sewer. Uh, general fund is a little bit more gray because that is governmental fund. Um, and sometimes you have general fund, you do wanna put money aside, future capital project, projects, and you might have transfers there, but. I, I mean, generally, I, I think you want the, my opinion, and I have to look through the actual rules on it, but. I think the rule, not that you want proprietary funds to be funded themselves.
It sounds.
In general, if you need more, uh, you know, typically, if, if, uh, you know, you need more funds for general operations, that's when you would be real estate. Or putting on the ITs and that. Um. I would have to look and see the specific rules, um, regarding the transfer, uh, out from electric sewer to general fund, I don't think there's anything. Flippable, um. I think you just wanna have the argument, okay, why is this happening, like, what is the general fund doing with the electric sewer that's already decided?
What we're doing isn't wrong, it's just not necessarily what's. The, the best recommendation for me.
Other things that practice, but it's not wrong, but other things that practice, you know.
And you said you see other municipalities that do the same thing, are they? Did you see the similar issues with them as you do with us? Or is there something unique about as far as transfers over?
Yeah.
Is that Jane?
Um, usually when I see a transfer over, it's sort of for some sort of fee. I do occasionally see, you know, while we had shortfall over here, you know, we have a surplus in electric, let's, let's move things over. I don't think it's the ongoing plan. It might just be a while in a, in a certain year or. Uh, you know, if, if there's a large, somewhat quasi-reliated project happening in the borough township. You know, they can make, usually there's some sort of. Explanation to why that was funded.
You're aware that our, we are not regulated by the public utility commission, right?
Uh, I believe so, I think that's.
Our electric fund is not regularly by the public utility commission.
I'm not referring, I'm referring to just, uh, governmental gashy rules for these other private.
Right, I'm just saying in Pennsylvania, there are a, a relatively small number of municipal governments that sell electricity.
Yeah, very well.
And, um. Many of them are rural areas, but the others are merged where they sold electricity because they got electricity early on. Where, you know, the railroad or streetlights or something before the surrounding townships had it. Um, in Hatfield, one reason our taxes are relatively low for a borough. Is that we do. Use some of the electric revenues to help with the general fund. So if you only use the electric revenues. For electricity and did not use any of them, you know, I understand what you're saying about paying a portion of the management salary because she's dealing with electric and. The public works guys are almost all electric, but, but I'm just saying that the. Fundamentals of the way this borough has operated for probably a hundred years, is that they. They try to set the electric great so they're competitive with their neighbors.
Yep.
You know, but then they, um, then they do use some of those funds.
Right, and like I said, electric is different, I actually grew up in Hatford that had electric, I, I worked with, I worked with my aunt's deal that has electric. Um.
Hatford actually is a very good system.
Yeah, it is, it is, um. So I'm not, you're right, electric might be a little bit of an outlier, sewer, I see a lot of those, I don't see a lot of sewer funds going to a general fund.
Right.
And, and like I said, I don't think you're gonna get all, I don't think you see the practice, but you make a good, you don't exactly have a usual situation. And whether, I think in the team, this, this town is the same idea that had electric.
Right, exactly.
I totally agree.
And I don't think we use as much of our sewer fund because sewers expensive.
It.
You know, and, and I don't know that the borough uses much of our sewer fund because you, we pay the Hatfield township municipal authority to, um. Process our sewage treated for. But the electric, on the other hand, actually.
Yeah, it's a very small number of sewer, it really is mostly.
Right.
I think breakdown's about monthly four million and it's, it's. Will save some teams for, there's a, back up. I, I mean, it's, it's not a lot, I understand a lot behind electric, um. I guess the only thing I would add there is. If you continue to move money out of the electric, I don't know if there's any sort of, one of the other things I have recommended, I recommend. Lance, you have it sort of long term capital. For your electric and your sewer infrastructure. That might be something that you wanna think about, maybe to keep it somewhere, I'm gonna do the electric, so we need to. But again, these are all just my additions.
We're actually wanting to go on more, 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 like, repairs than we used to, so a lot of things.
Yeah, the structure is not getting, I was getting older, but.
Unfortunately. Well, basically, your numbers will level a little more than you normally, because self stealing is not going to be equipped for us.
No, and, and even with the transfer, I guess the other thing, I go back to that fund balance graph, it's sewer and electric that are staying steady. Which is, we, you know, well, it's not like we really eating into funds, this funds. You know, your transfer, it is just this request, this, this whole thing.
And those funds both have reserve money. Sewer and electric, they have money in, built in.
Yeah, that's why, and that's why you have those steady, steady fund balance, yep. You have any questions for Chris? All right, thanks, thanks guys, I appreciate it, if any other questions, have to come up or anything, please feel free to contact me anytime. All right, take care. Yeah, I figured if my president, your heart is an accountant too, if you have a lot of questions, if it's gonna say something, so. I, you need to be, yeah, a good presentation, or if holding back, I'll get a call more. All right, I said a generally positive, so that's good. Diane, good job.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure, so, trying to keep track of all the funds and distributed money, I'm not surprised with a few spillages there, but.
You do a good job, so we appreciate it.
All right, if there's no questions for that, we'll go to item number six, reports and correspondence, start with monthly year dates.
A monthly year to date report was in your packets, so starting off a new year for twenty twenty three, you can see, uh, the revenues and expenses. Uh, for January, so again, we were, um, six hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars in revenue. And five hundred and seventy-five thousand plus in expenses for starting off January.
I have a good question about that. So if you look at January of twenty twenty two, the revenue was three hundred and ninety-three less. So it really jumped up, was there a reason that we got more, nothing to complain about? You know, was there a reason that we got so much more, two hundred and fifty thousand more in January of this year? Versus last year, the expenses were pretty even last year versus this year, so.
Yeah, the only thing I can think of, I thought about that, so I wrote that down, that I had three ninety-three for, and five forty-five for last year. I can think that were higher up on, right off the bat, off of EIT was up at the, in January, that was right off the bat, that was higher than it was in, uh, twenty twenty two. What we saw in January twenty twenty three, LST was pretty the same, um, I was just trying to think of. Transfer taxes, yeah, just, I thought of EIT and I wrote it down and then to bring up a meant to ask you today of like a prep question. Um, I thought of EIT, so transfer tax too, um, those are two things that could probably make a significant difference, okay. Were there any other questions on that report? Did, we went through a whole year, do you like what you see, was this. Efficient enough, would you like us to change it, you kinda had it for a year now, is something that was good for the report, is it giving enough information? And just see some more, eh, we can always make adjustments or changes, you know.
No, I think it's good, so it gives us that snatch on to where we're at overall, so I think it's still good, it's not bad. We'll change that.
Thank you. Go on to.
I think that's probably the change first. Uh, if there's any questions, we'll go to I and B, the fire company report.
Fire company report was included in your packets, uh, just wanted to highlight as of January, there were five, uh, calls. In Hatfield Borough, I did try to look back at where we were in January of twenty twenty two. Unfortunately, they only used to give quarterly reports, so I didn't have anything to judge off of where they were in January. I'm not sure if we're gonna keep getting monthly reports or they'll go back to quarterly, that's something that I can talk to Butch about, if we like to try to see more month. Like we do with, um, police and BMFC. But, um, just wanted to highlight, there were five calls. Their times or en route times seem the same from, you know, very close to, uh, four point nine seven, uh. First truck en route was that the first quarter of last year was relatively similar to that. So we'll just have to, um, keep track of that and, uh, we'll reach out and ask them about getting monthly versus quarterly reports. So that doesn't really compare to.
Any questions? All right, now we'll go to I and C, the, uh, the EMS summary report.
Uh, the EMS report was in your packets, a few highlights, uh, nineteen zone calls for January. Uh, total BMFC calls were up to, uh, one thousand fifty-six, that's the highest I've seen, I looked at in all of last year. I think the highest they might have got per month was nine hundred and seventy-some, you know, so that was significantly higher for the month. One addition that they did make was, uh, the response level of service. We had a, a meeting with, uh, municipal managers in the North Penn area. And a lot of managers would like to see, um, who's attending these calls, are you getting a paramedic? Which is an, um, advanced life safety, you know, you'll have a paramedic on the call, are you getting, uh, BLS? With an advanced EMT, are you getting a BLS which is basic life, life safety, or just a regular EMT? So that was something that was added under the response level of service, so you can kinda see, um, a paramedic. Or responding to twelve of the calls, um, uh, an advanced EMT to three, just so we can kinda see who's responding to our calls in our municipality. So that was an addition this month.
Is that based on how they staffed it as well, or?
Yeah, when, when we had the meeting, we had, uh, said that. They were trying to stack more paramedics per call, uh, as, as best as they can to make sure that a paramedic or an advanced EMT was, um, going to every call.
Um, are you aware, when they opened a new station down there on forty, uh, near about forty foot road, they, that missed when you continue as it's been, like when you change someone?
What station?
The, the, from, from, from the road station, by, uh, the, at the, uh. Firehouse, the seven hundred.
Yeah, they, they had, they've been stationing, uh, an ambulance service there probably for the past six months to a year, so they do run out of there. Uh, if you notice, they did start to, um, not station, but, um, an ambulance will be at. Um, where Woodburner, Saltzer used to be next to like the Septalot, they've been putting, um, an ambulance in there because they'd be getting a lot of calls and they're starting to take over Salberton area. So they've been, um, having, uh, an ambulance kind of stationed there during the day, you've seen them when you're driving by, that's another. Uh, place also down in, I don't even know if it's Montgomery or North Wales, where like, uh, Red Nurses, Ossie, the, uh, supermarket down there, David Station down there. Just to try to get quicker response times to where they've been having, like, targeted areas.
All right, any other questions? Cause now we'll go to item seven, new business, and we'll start with the updated twenty twenty three draft, the eighty day, ABA and roadway resurfaces schedule.
So the updated schedule is in your packets, it's probably, if you don't mind, easier to just combine A and B. Which is the updated draft schedule along with the ADA grant project bid advertisement. Uh, I included the draft schedule in your packets and wanted to highlight that on for consideration as an action item this evening, would be to advertise. Uh, this bid for the twenty twenty-three, um, ADA program. The reason we spoke last meeting as we wanted to push this up a month. Was, um, we were trying to get the numbers back sooner as we had sidewalk rejections and some of the residents that have their sidewalk rejections. Would like to see if the borough price is cheaper than going with somebody else, so the sooner we can get that number back. The sooner we can tell the residents that, hey, this is the number, and if you like it, the borough will do your work and bill you, as we've done in the past for residents. Or if you wanna go on your own, it still gives you a little bit more time as the sidewalk projections have to be completed by, uh, June first of twenty twenty three. So it just kinda bumped up, uh, the schedule, so on for consideration, as I said, is to advertise the bid. When the bid is complete, it's supposed to be, um, advertised by the first of March.
Is it possible to extend it as well too, when you think about the roadway resurfacing, whether residents could get involved with the same pricing that we're getting for asphalt work? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Something we never talked about before, but it's something I've always thought about, the, you know, it's, uh. Again, give residents opportunity to get cheaper, uh, asphalt work in their driveways or whatever else they want to do. Cause that's something you need to look at, maybe not this year, but maybe in the future, um.
It, it's a little trickier, okay, we're talking about driveways or alleys?
Either one, either one where someone put asphalt.
The, the good news about a sidewalk, and the borough could recognize this is. You know, you have so many blocks in front of your house, and if it's bad, um, and we cite it for it or cite it letters and it's gonna have to be replaced. You know, they can do, if the next guy doesn't beat the sidewalk down, he goes, why the sidewalk down, they don't have to do that, it's not really a problem. I think it's a little bit of a problem with an alley, but. The alleys are owned privately, people often, uh, believe their own mother, but they're not, they're owned privately. And so if somebody on the alley said, no, I'm not gave them my, you know, somebody of the alley. What are you gonna do? Not do it? Clean them, you know, whatever, I mean, I, I think it's, I think it's harder to do alleys, you can't spend. Tax dollars on private property. We're not doing that, for the sidewalks, they pay us back. But it seems to be a little bit harder, maybe not possible, suppose everybody on the alleyway free, then you could do it. And your next question would be, what would, what, to what standard would you want to pay? We normally bid it out at a road spec or highway spec, you know, we want, we want our roads paved to a certain level, we want. So many inches of this, so many inches of that. We don't usually require that or even have that, in most of the alleys. So, so we have that issue too, I, I think alleys are problematic, and I also think driveways are problematic. Sidewalks can have a problem with perfect. Alleys do too, and I think sometimes you can help people with alleys if you think that it's not considered a public health safety policy. That a particular alley. Needs a pothole patch or something like that, to make it safe, because EMS uses that alley. The front street's busier, or the front street has no parking or whatever, you know what I mean? I, I could see it in some case for a public health safety worker, but otherwise, I think that'd be tough, I think you'd have to get the. The residents would have to all agree, or else it would be darn near impossible to do that job.
Yeah, I was just thinking more of, you know, is the way of providing pricing that's cheaper for people if they want to resurface the driveway. If they would schedule at the same time, the same company, they might get a cheaper raise, just like we do with sidewalks, so.
Right, they could probably cut the deal. With the contractor, in other words, they could say, hey, I see you got one of the bid for School Street. I live on School Street, you have left their brown asphalt, you think we could repay by, by way, I'll pay you. You know, that, that would be between them and whoever are responsible for that, talking about knowledge. Be, you know, easy to do.
Yeah, I think in the past, um or outside of sidewalks, we have also said, um leaving the borough out of it. You have every right to independently go to that contractor that won the bid in the borough and work an agreement out outside of the borough. You know, you have to work that out individually with that contractor, and we didn't discourage that or encourage that, that was just, hey, you can do that if you want. I also don't necessarily know that the pricing is cheaper if you go with the borough contractor, because we pay prevailing wage. For all of ours, because we have to, so just because it, and it may be or may not, but just because. Somebody is mobilized uh at a location for concrete or asphalt, doesn't mean the price is cheaper because they're paying their prevailing wage, whereas that's what they legally have to get. So it might be, you could use that same contractor, but on your own outside of the borough, might be a better deal. It's, hey, he's already there, right? That's what you want, the mobilization, but if you don't go through the borough. And that contractor is willing to do it on the side, you probably, you get a cheaper price because they're already mobilized, and you're not gonna pay the prevailing wage because it's not through the borough's contractor.
So fast, we just tell it then, manage it, we let people know who it is.
Yeah, right, we tell who it is, yeah, we contact them, but sometimes there is left in the asphalt.
We started doing it more for the sidewalks where the borough did the work. And not the resident uh reaching out individually for the contracts, because the sidewalks are more imperative to get done before the paving. So we were always in a time crunch, and the residents weren't doing it, and then the curbs weren't getting done, and people wanted to cut the curbs on newly paved roads. And it was like a schedule, but for asphalt, I mean, it's not really, there, there's no time. Yeah, it's not, so that's kind of why we started doing it on sidewalks, and we really only started last year where, hey, we'll do it if it's marked and then we'll bill you. And it worked out good, because previously on North Wayne, it was, and I know part of it was because of the pandemic, but people just didn't do the work. And then we wanted to pave it, and then they were coming afterward trying to cut the, the monolithic curb out, and it just had to be a nightmare, so we're like, oh, we're sidewalks. We thought it could work out, I don't know about paving, how it would work on alleys and or with driveways.
All right, any questions on that? All right, we'll go to I and D, neighborhood neighbor, Hatfield Chompers, Borough Board.
That's, that's one. Uh President Ferguson requested that I check into the neighborhood neighbor, Borough Board, and see about adapting that for using the borough. Um basically, it's connect those in need with those and that can provide. The borough would maintain a resource guide, which lists the people that are going to provide assistance to their neighbors. Would post information on the website and on the Facebook page, and um then the person would. Contact the borough and say, I'm willing to provide this for, for a need help. And then the borough would act as a liaison between the two groups. When we initially discussed this, I wasn't sure if you wanted me to maintain that base or that be maintained by the borough. I mean, the contact would have to be named to them. And then I could make that information be put into the database, and then I could, you know. Contact the people, so what, what, what is your, what was your idea, or you?
So it was more that the borough would ultimately be that goat, right? Because one of the things, when I thought about that, was how do you set something up? And make sure that people aren't getting scammed or something else, so.
If you look at my points for consideration, through, you know, um apparently. At the last town meeting, Lindsay uh said that this was attempted before, and with mixed results, I'll say, um.
And when we said mixed results, what were the actions?
Oh, well, um. Uh apparently, people were saying contacting so-and-so, well, okay, I need somebody to travel my snow. The person said, oh, no, okay. And they never. So that the people who requested the help would go back to the borough and say, well, they never helped me. So do we want to be? Bothered by that, do we want to, you know, have to um cope with that? Um, I don't know, do we? I, I think that's the reason why it wasn't more successful the last time.
Basically, you know, should the borough be the belt package? You know, what, what, what her idea was to, here's the information, you work it out with me yourself. You know, the borough is just providing you the information, John, you'd like to help yourself, you weren't. Now, it's like, we're a clearinghouse, but we don't say responsible before who, 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 what, but the liar.
Right, and that's, and that's also why I was concerned about what is the liar of the borough is. You know, you don't know somebody, as you say, somebody that's has a different idea of what helping is. You know, something, something occurs and are we liable for that, because we hook them up?
That's just the worst.
I would be worried about that, and, and the other thing that worries me, and, and, you know. Maybe it's I've been doing this too long, but we would be attracting on the one hand, a vulnerable population that needs help. And on the other hand, we'd be attracting either people who are just generous by nature and would help them out. Or who might be looking to take advantage of that, and we would be putting them together. And they, the vulnerable people would trust us not to give them some terrible person, but we wouldn't know enough about the terrible person to know. That he or she was a terrible person. So I, I think that's kind of nerve-racking, it might be better if neighbors actually help neighbors, I mean. You know, and, and I'm sure they do, in many places in the borough, as, as I'm swearing, you know? Yeah, you know, that person's older, I'll get your mail for you because it's snowing, you know what I mean, or something like that, I've seen them do that, I think. You know, and I think that, I like the idea, but I'm not sure the borough should be where we, where the, the individuals would be. I, I think maybe we could encourage it, maybe we could do in our um newsletter, maybe we can say, I'll watch out for your neighbors this winter. And if they need help, help them, and the other thing is, uh sometimes churches are helpful. I believe the, the church become, or the minister becomes aware that somebody's needing trouble. They also become aware, Larry lives next door, hey Larry, better watch out for his Smith, she needs help. You know, I mean, and that might be a better way to connect people, also because the minister presumably knows both of their members of congregation. I, I don't know, maybe I'm cynical, I'm just wondering, that will be identifying a horrible uh group, and I don't want to identify them to be responsible for something.
And, and a lot of people that are vulnerable, they're so trusting, right? I have people that I knew, you know, I talked to them once and they're inviting into their house and showing people, like, you know, I'm not gonna do anything to them, but you don't know about them, right? So. Good idea, but, and I think a lot of churches, I know my church, you know, if somebody needs a ride, they'll put it in the bulletin, and you're kind of willing to do that. And just neighbors, there's a woman right around block from us, she will turn one hundred years old this October. And I take her to get her, I took her to get COVID vaccinations, I took, gave her, gave her meds, and. So I think there are a lot of people that already are helping their neighbors.
And your only relationship is that your neighbors?
That your neighbors, right, and she's such a sweet baby, that I can notice, so um. I don't know, what does everybody think, I would think that we might be.
It's, it's a good idea, but whether or not the borough should be the group, I think is the issue. But it's a good idea to bring people together, help them, but I, I think the horrible person would trust the borough to have to check out the other person, I'm not sure we're capable of doing.
The other thing with that too is, one, if they're saying somebody wrong, hears a shovel their sidewalk. And then that person never comes out, and they're getting, saying they're their sidewalk company, and, and who's responsible for that? That would be another issue. There is a neighbors app, though, so maybe. I, I have no idea if somebody offers that kind of service, but maybe there are offered, but we're not already.
Yeah, I've seen that, there are people who ask for help through the neighbors app. Uh, uh, I myself always think, ah, I don't think I'd like announce it on, I'm so immediate, and evidently people do, yeah.
Well, I think my next, I, I write something quarterly, and I think for the second quarter, I'm gonna put and say. You know, think about neighbors, you know, just, you know, I don't know if anybody needs what I write, but um, you know, I can put that. On my.
Right.
Page, and, and.
Our motto, what's your motto? Something friendly place, I mean, we happen on some of the signage, that's. Walk down with a big car, maybe even do that at your.
That will be my opening sentence, right?
No, I thi- I think that's good, it's just gonna encourage his neighbors to help neighbors. Reach out to them. Another idea bites the ass.
I think so, you're absolutely correct, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I think you're all absolutely correct, so.
At least the ideas are, you know, at least, well, women to consider different things, and I think that's a good thought, you know, I mean.
Uh, item D, zoning hearing board meeting announcements.
There is a zoning hearing board meeting scheduled for March twenty-third at seven PM here in council chambers. To discuss fourteen North Market Street. They would uh are requesting a variance to change the office use to a residential use. Uh they are currently located in the Core Commercial District, and as part of the Core Commercial District. Multifamily dwellings um in combination with commercial uses, provided such residential uses that only be allowed in the commercial district. If located above and allowed principal commercial use, that shall occupy the entire floor that is closest to the street level or at the front of the lot. So uh they are looking to get a variance and ask that it can be uh multifamily on the, on the first floor and the second floor. Not commercial on the bottom and multifamily on the top, or residential on the top. So that is scheduled for March twenty-third at seven PM here in council chambers. Most of the discussion comes around if borough council weighs in with an opinion on that, or if you need the solicitor to represent you.
You, you don't have to weigh in, you appoint a zoning board, it's their job to make these decisions. If you have a strong feeling that something's either a very good idea or a very bad idea. You can vote as a borough to send the solicitor to represent that opinion. So it, it's, it's up to you, it's, there's, um, I would say it's unusual. For the governing body to send somebody to zoning board, but we're a little borough, and, you know, and it may feel different, you know? In most cases, you took what the zoning board do to them, and, and that's fine, but if you have strong feelings on something and. And you want the zoning board to be influenced by that, I think probably will. I'm not saying they're gonna vote the way you tell them to vote, they don't have to, they said, they accept terms, they get to keep their uh three or four-year term. You know, no matter how they, they vote on something, but. I have never met a zoning board, never the one that been hit so much, my hearing from borough council on, on something like that, you know?
So I'm just looking at the, in Google map, you know, that surrounding other side of the street where. That it ends right, you know, the street right, and then you've just got residential on the side of Market heading out towards you, the type.
I don't have a map in front of me, but where it is, you know, just for your whole life.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And the idea, when we did Core Commercial some years ago, was, the idea was that to encourage past uses. The stores in the park or the store, like, yeah, keep the Core Commercial with some business.
And is the Core Commercial just along that Market Street there, because you've got houses in the back that's towards Cherry Street, that I think are just residential, right?
Yeah, Core Commercial is Firehouse down in front of Firehouse down, East Broad, um. That section downtown with the revitalization, so things in two thousand nine, revitalization of those in two thousand nine, out to um. Down to almost a little bit by Tom and San Adel, out here on Main Street. The section of one side of the street is Core Commercial, and one's Commercial out here gets a little bit tricky, but that's in that area, yes.
Does council have an opinion on it, that we want solicitor to? To advocate for us? I don't think so. I don't think so either, okay, all right. All right, if there's nothing else, we'll go on to item number eight, old business, the hundred twenty-fifth anniversary store.
So last meeting, we discussed the hundred twenty-fifth anniversary store, what was added to the store? Was the hat that we talked about, so we talked about adding a hat to the store, our current vendor that we use for the store is just a textile clothing vendor. So they cannot produce, uh as we talked about, travel mugs or mouse pads or those things. If we want those type of items, it would have to be a cash and carry outside of this type of vendor. This vendor for the online store is simply the clothing store. So um I know that Lindsay had got a couple samples for mouse pads, um that was something that the mayor liked. I think our pricing, oh, so she, she showed some examples.
Four, yeah, I was about to say.
One over the other, rail, how many to the rail? How many to the store? Maybe Chichi was the time go for a round. So I, I think what we were planning on doing with the mouse pads was we could get them fairly cheap and do them as giveaways there, because they were maybe a dollar, eighty-eights. If, if something maybe a little bit less, it wasn't expensive at all, and then if you wanted to look into mugs. Uh and or travel mugs, any other type of item through another vendor, we could order, say you wanted to order fifty, and we could have cash and carry. At the borough office, cash and carry at the event, it just want to be incorporated as our online store, because they just, like I said, only do clothing. So that's the conversation for you guys, we certainly can look into other items as well. We just have to kind of know what direction you'd like to go, and or, hurrah, can talk about it at the next meeting and decide if we want to order some items for the hundred twenty-fifth, that's cash and carry.
I think Lindsay said, when I was talking to her, that um mugs were rather expensive.
Yes.
As we're looking for glasses and that, and they were kind of expensive, so. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I, maybe we can get some pricing uh for travel mugs, the regular ceramic coffee mugs, some glasses. And she could share it at your next hurrah meeting, because if they'll be cash carried, we can get them for a print, they'd be at the office. Within a couple of weeks, and then that would be plenty of time to sell here and at the event, if you think the pricing's okay. You can either buy a mug for, you know, ten dollars and spend, you know, you can try to keep it in the reasonable price.
Yeah, I guess more in print too, good, it's a kind of like, what are the more popular items that people will buy, and then that may give you some ideas, yeah.
Or if you did like the Yeti mugs, you could like a wrap for it or something, or.
As you discussed, possibly having like baskets to win, you know, with the borough in it, so the mugs.
Yeah, that, I mean, can, yeah.
People with stuff like that, there's a cost, I'm saying, like the printing, which is, so, kind of blind design. And then, uh, you know, you uh. The more you buy, it's going to be because you're starting to have that major cost, but it's the greatest. So if you're only selling five, may not be worth it. You might have to sell some too, page worth one.
That's true. That's true.
We can bring it up before her, I'm talking.
I can or get some samples, print out pricing and then take it to the meeting for you guys and then you guys can decide from there. Then say, who want to have cash and carry items?
Yeah, we could also have a raffle at the end too, that's whatever's left, if you're rid of, you know, so that we wouldn't necessarily break even, but we wouldn't necessarily lose them to you, so. And you get it all out to the people who are responsible too.
Does anybody in here produce any of these things? Who's in the HROC committee?
No.
No. Okay, just a thought.
Yeah. We have to laugh.
I don't think anybody in the borough would dream of these things.
Now we have in business.
I guess you give away plants, the new screen sounds.
We'll get the logo printed on the the base of the.
The line.
Yeah, yeah. That's an ideal for them as well. You have any questions on that? All right, if not, we'll go to item nine, action items. So we have one action item tonight, and that is to consider the ADA program bidding uh specification, so. Can I get a motion for that, for any of the old business? One second, I get a motion from Councilim Presser, a second from Councilim Gerard. Any questions? All in favor?
I.
I propose. There are none, motion passes. All right, we're on C, uh item ten, that motion to approve the bill. Might be a motion.
Before we do that, I have a question. I've noticed on here, we have two payments from Mallet for the order, one is for the two thousand twenty one wanted, forty two hundred. The other one is for the twenty twenty four, nine thousand. Is there a reason why the twenty twenty one war wasn't paid out while we lived, twenty twenty two and twenty twenty two later on?
Thanks.
Yes, go ahead.
When I drag in Excel, it automatically um changes the number. So they're both twenty twenty one, one for nine thousand, was missed billed in July. So that's why that's not there. And the twenty twenty two should be twenty twenty one two, which is just finished now, the odd.
So.
Sorry about that.
Yeah.
When I drag it down, it changes the number and I didn't catch up.
Okay.
Any other questions? Or we did some motions? All right, can I get a motion to approve the bills?
Sure.
I'll second, I get a motion from Councilim Stevens, a second from Councilim Gerard. I'm assuming there's no questions. All in favor?
I.
Pose. There are none, motion passes. Are we scheduled to have a second session on the.
Oh.
Now we will.
Just personnel issues.
All right. I get a motion to adjourn.
I'm up.
Second. All right.